Call to order, Town of Prescott Valley. Regular town council meeting, April 13th, 2023. Welcome, everyone. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Leyva. Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Heppertly.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Here.
Mayor Palaguda.
Present.
We have a crowd.
Councilmember, I'd like to note that Councilwoman Leyva, her absence is excused. She contacted me earlier. At this time, normally we invite someone down for our invocation, and tonight was scheduled to be everyone's favorite, Pastor Mike from Mount Zion Congregation in Prescott, but I don't see him here. Mr. Legler, would you lead us in the invocation?
Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to meet together. Thank thee, Father, for the might be with us, guided and directed in what we do and say. We ask this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Mr. Legler, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to
At this time, we're going to move on to item three, proclamations, and the first one up is, "Stand with Me, Be Drug Free."
Whereas MapForce has proclaimed April 9 through the 15 to be Stand With Me, Be Drug Free Week, and whereas the Town of Prescott Valley embraces a vision of a healthy, vibrant, and strong community for children, youth, families, and people of all ages, and celebrates the fact that a majority of people do not abuse drugs and alcohol, whereas the Town of Prescott Valley recognizes that youth prevention is essential based on the fact that nine out of 10 people who struggle with substance use disorders began using substances as a teenager, whereas knowing that families are adversely affected by illegal drug use, including work problems, legal problems, mental health problems, physical illness, addiction, accidents, accidental death, economic loss, child abuse, destruction of families, driving while impaired, and crimes against persons and property, and whereas the Town of Prescott Valley would like to commend and pay tribute to all its citizens who choose to be free of legal drug use, now therefore be it resolved that I, Kelpalaguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, to hereby proclaim April 9 through the 15 a Stand With Me, Be Drug Free Week, and encourage its citizens to participate in the celebration of a drug-free, healthy community by participating in the planned events, activities in this place. Thank you.
Welcome, ma'am.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Kelly Lee, and I am the program manager at MapForce. Several years ago, our coalition came up with Stand With Me, Be Drug Free slogan as a way to share with our kids in our schools that 80% of kids choose not to use drugs. I know they think that everybody does, and that's, you know, their thought in their head, but if they knew that 80% don't, then we can make healthier choices. So we recognize this week as Stand With Me, Be Drug Free Week. We have a walk on Saturday at Mortimer Farms at 10 o'clock. Walk with me, be drug free, and we encourage our businesses and our town to hang our posters. Thank you.
Next up, Fair Housing Month proclamation.
Whereas the National Fair Housing Law of 1986, as amended by the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States, and whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans, and whereas April has traditionally been designated Fair Housing Month in the United States, now therefore I, Kelpalaguda, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do proclaim April as Fair Housing Month, and to hereby urge all citizens of Prescott Valley to comply with the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm honored to receive this in behalf of the Town of Prescott Valley.
Next up is Library Week 2023.
National Library Week, whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the population they serve and ensure equity of access for all, and whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of the communities, continually expanding their collection services and partnerships, and whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic fatality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs, and whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals, and whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kelpalaguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, proclaim April 23rd to the 29th as National Library Week. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This year's theme for National Library Week is There's More to the Story. Prescott Valley Public Library's story centers around our community. Our goal is to build bright futures and create community connections to enhance our community's quality of life and prosperity. Our library offers more than just books. We also have a library of things to borrow, programming for entertainment and education, and infrastructure that advances our community through internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for businesses, job seekers, and entrepreneurs. Characters play a crucial role in any story, and the same goes for our library's story. Our staff, volunteers, and patrons are the heart of this library and contribute greatly to its success. I think every one of our supporters who understand the purpose of libraries is to connect people to information and to one another. Thank you.
And folks, we're going to do things just a little bit different tonight, just because I saw Mr. Pastor Mike walk in, and I know you came from Prescott, so sir, I would love to hear what you have to say, and I don't think anyone here will disagree, that doesn't hurt to have a little extra talk with God today, so come on down, Mike.
God, please don't take my tiredness as a sign of disrespect. I was conveying in prayer with the mayor. By the way, I don't do anything without prayer. So, Mayor, I was in prayer for you, and for two reasons. Number one, because I like you. Yeah, and that's not above me, because I don't want to borrow no money, but number two, Mayor, because the Bible says we should pray for our leaders, and I always obey what the Bible says. So, real talk, Mayor, I'm asking God, I said, "God, what do I pray for the mayor for? For what, and what's happened?" He said, "Pray for the mayor for the same reason you need prayer." What? Said, "Pray for the mayor for the same reason you need prayer." And then I began to understand. He revealed to me, he said, "The mayor shoulders the burden of success for Prescott Valley, as I shoulder the burden for success for my church." And so then I understood what he wanted me to pray for you for. So, Mayor, I wanted you to know that my church and I were praying that the mayor would go where God says go. He would say what God says say. He would do what God says do. He would give what God says give. And if you did that, then the onus of success and the burden wouldn't be on you, it'd be on God. So I was glad about that, so that's what we were praying for you, and I just wanted you to know, Mayor, from the bottom of my heart, that I understand the kind of leader that you are, because I too am that kind of leader, and we really just servants, and nobody really understands the totality of that commitment like you and I and other leaders who happens to be servants. So I wanted you to know before I prayed, first of all, I'm sorry for being late, but number two, I feel you, Mayor. I feel you. Amen? Real talk. Let, can we pray? Glory be to God. Father God, we come before you very humbly, very humbly, God, for we know that it's nothing we could do without you. Things are failing without you. Father God, I'm asking that your Holy Spirit would permeate this meeting. Father, that you would give us wisdom, as your word said, Father, that you would give wisdom literally and freely to those who ask. Let wisdom permeate this room now. Father God, I ask that you would give us discernment. Let discernment permeate this room. Father God, I ask that you would give us understanding, Father, and revelation knowledge. Father God, I ask that you would speak through the mayor's team and himself, and speak to him, that, Father God, we would understand the way that you have paved for the mayor to show us to follow for success. And now, God, we thank you for being with our nation. We thank you for being with Prescott Valley, and we thank you for being with us right now in Jesus' name. And everybody said, "Amen." Oh, wait a minute. And everybody said... Bless you, sir. Bless me.
Now, we're moving on to Bradshaw Mountain High School student of the month, Councilwoman Heppertly.
Well, that's just not even fair, Pastor Michael, but here's April. I'm so glad we have a full house. You guys are in for a treat tonight. The Town of Prescott Valley, in collaboration with the Optimist Club of Yavapai County and Bradshaw Mountain High School, are honoring these outstanding students for, it says November, for April. Please welcome Ellie Bennett and Garrett Barstad. We are recognizing these students because of their school and community engagement. They have been nominated by their school staff and instructors at Bradshaw Mountain High School. Congratulations to you both. We're going to hear a little bit about their individual achievements, starting with Ellie.
Hello, my name is Ellie Bennett. I'm a senior at Bradshaw Mountain High School. I have lived in Prescott Valley for 10 years, and I love this community. I have always been athletic. I grew up playing soccer and swimming, but I grew, I struggled a lot in school. In second grade, we realized I have processing and short-term memory disabilities. This made learning how to read and do math very difficult. Thankfully, my family and amazing teachers always supported, taught me strategies, and never gave up on me. I have also, I was also very motivated to read my first chapter book, so I can pick out my puppy. While school has been challenging, I knew that it might take me longer to learn something. I also know that I can still do the work. I am excited to say that I earned a 4.0 last semester. I am a pretty shy person, and I hate to talk about myself, but my mom said that it's okay to celebrate your successes the past four years, so here it goes. I will graduate from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints Seminary Program in May. This means I have studied all the scriptures, and that I was in seminary class for four days, four days a week at 6:00 a.m. for four years. I have also served in several callings in my church, and I love to help others when I can. My favorite place to serve is at sports events like basketball camps, basketball tournaments, and track meets. Everyone knows me, knows that I am an outstanding athlete. I love sports, and I can run all day. I played two years of volleyball. I swam two years, and I have ran track for four years. This year, I hope to qualify for state in the 400 meters. Basketball is my favorite, and I am a four-year varsity player. I finished my career with 943 points. My coach thinks I could have had 1,000 points if it wasn't for COVID. Secretly, I agree with him. I was named the Defensive Player of the Region as a junior, and this year I was named the Offensive Player of the Region, scoring 476 points. I have loved my time making great friends on the track, in the pool, and on the court. Athletics in school keep me busy, so in my free time, I keep up with responsibilities at home. I train my two dogs, and I compose original piano pieces. I also keep busy pet sitting for neighbors and friends. I am grateful for this opportunity to be recognized, to let other students know who have learning disabilities that you can do hard things. This is also a celebration for my parents, my brothers, my friends, and my teammates, my coaches, my teachers, who help me keep my chin up, and who encourage me to be the best I can be each day. Next year, I will be attending Yavapai College, where I work on my general studies and continue to play basketball. Thank you.
And now we will hear from Garrett.
Hi, my name is Garrett Barstad. I am a senior at Bradshaw Mountain High School. I am a part of my high school swim team and science Olympiad team. I have made close friends who I consider family from both of these teams, and made memories I will not soon forget. My parents have worked consistently and diligently to give me every opportunity to succeed, and my sister, who has set a high bar, graduated from the University of Arizona and is now a travel nurse, helping people wherever she goes. Now, this is the part where I'm supposed to boast about myself and all my accomplishments and tell you how proud I am of myself, but I don't love doing that. So instead, I want to take this as an opportunity to thank all the people who have supported me throughout my journey. Were it for my mentors, classmates, and family, I know it would have been far more difficult to make it to this point. They are the people who make my everyday life better, and none of my accomplishments would have been possible without them. I have a GPA of 3.5, though high school has never come easy to me, and at times I have even felt helpless. Nonetheless, every day I walk into school, and I always put my best foot forward and put in as much effort as I can. High school has been an experience that has allowed me to grow and learn from my mistakes. I plan on attending Arizona State University once I graduate from high school with a major in psychology. My hope is that through this, I can help those who need it in the same way so many of the people I love have helped me. Thank you for this award, and thank you for your time.
Great work, guys. I absolutely love the students that we have that come in that are overcomers, that, you know, it just makes your accomplishments even that much more powerful, so. And Brett, I'm sure you have a few things to add.
Mayor, Councilwoman Heppertly, thank you for always doing this, and the rest of the council. I am going to let Mr. Hall, who demanded that he get to come tonight and speak on their behalf, he really didn't, but he wanted to. He had both of these kids as a teacher as well, and he really wants to say a few words. This is the second night in a row that I've got to speak on behalf of our kids. The county had something for our 4.0 students last night as well, and one of the things these guys experienced in high school, so they've been here for four years, has been really interrupted by that C-word that someone mentioned, right? The COVID word. And what I mentioned last night, and what I'll mention again today about these guys, is every opportunity presented itself to make excuses for not doing the hard things, and I think all of us can learn a little something about perseverance and grit from these two kids. They demonstrated it over and over and over. Councilwoman Heppertly just mentioned it as well. They are such phenomenal models. I hope to grow up and be just like them one day. So, all right, Mr. Hall, if you don't mind.
Good evening, everybody. I didn't really want to speak, but Mr. Doll is really working on my public speaking skills, so he throws me under the bust all the time, yeah, speaking to the mic. In my role as an administrator, it's really great, because we have all these wonderful kids on our campus. They are fantastic kids, tons of great kids, but the struggle is every time we pick these kids, they're super humble. They don't know how to brag on themselves. And one thing we say every day, our motto at Bradshaw Mountain High School is choose excellence, and these folks have chosen excellence. And Ellie, I've known you since seventh grade, and I've just watched you achieve, 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 achieve. You are an impressive young person, and I'm proud that I got to be a part of your academic journey. Garrett, I got to be your teacher in high school. You blew my mind every single day, and you're both are going to do amazing things for this town and probably this world, so I feel blessed that I got to be a part of your journey, and I just can't wait to see what else you do for the town and the world, okay? So congratulations to you guys. This is well deserved. Thank you.
And now we'll hear from Optimist Mike Whitey.
I'll just get a little closer. I think if we boom out like we've just heard, we don't need the microphone sometimes, but this is a special time. I think every second week of the month, we honor our Students of the Month, and tonight is much better than November, I think, April, don't you believe? April is number one in my book. But we're here, as we always are, to recognize a few of many that attend Bradshaw Mountain High School for their excellence in terms of school and community. And so we're here to say thank you and to recognize them for their achievements and their accomplishments, and they have demonstrated, I think, the responsibility, as you've heard through all the struggles, to take responsibility for school and in the community, and they've been successful, and they are outstanding, obviously, or they wouldn't be here tonight. And I would like to just give a moment to ask any parents or relatives of our Students of the Month to please stand up so we can recognize you for your support and help as well for our students. I'm going to keep it brief, so it's my pleasure, on behalf of the Optimist Club of Prescott Valley and the Town Council of Prescott Valley and Bradshaw Mountain High School, to recognize you and congratulate you as April Students of the Month. Congratulations. And April is going to give you a couple of certificates and plaques that recognize your efforts and your achievements, and please put them in a place that everybody can see and celebrate your outstanding achievements here at Bradshaw Mountain High School. Congratulations.
Next up, called public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any person wishing to address the council must register their name with the town prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time granted by the mayor. Clerk.
This time, I would like to call Steven Gerard Sodlowski.
Welcome, sir. Right there, sorry.
Thank you. Good, wonderful afternoon, evening, beloved mayor, wonderful council for the Town of Prescott Valley and citizens. I'm laybrother Steven Gerard Sodlowski. I'd like to open up with just a simple song, because it's part of my theme. I think it has a little eastern piece in it, too. The joy of the Spirit of God is love for his creation. Clap, clap. The joy of the Spirit of God is love for his creation. Beloved everybody, I have been in Arizona since all the last part of February. I attended your Arizona March for Life. I can tell you that it was well-attended, over 4,000 citizens. I'm delighted to let you know that when I first arrived in your Prescott area, that Diane Duncan of Life Connections, who has her wonderful nonprofit in your beautiful Prescott Valley area, kind of inculcated, taught me a little bit about the area, so I'm very thankful for her welcoming me to this particular area. I've given you a Bible bookmark in the package. Enjoy that. Some important information on the back. If you don't understand it, please text and email me. It does have pro-life Bible book verses on the Bible bookmark, okay? I've also given you the flyer of my efforts in the wonderful state of Arizona. I've spoken at many charter cities, including Prescott itself. You are my first town that I've ever spoken in, all across the United States, so I'm humbled, actually, that I get to finally speak to a town. I took the liberty to do research before I arrived here, and I reviewed your state constitution. I learned that Article 13 talks about how cities can establish charters. If the population in Section 2 says you're over 3,500, and you can assign 14 charter commissioners. I'm saddened, because there was nothing about towns in that, so there's room for improvement in the state of Arizona for towns to move in the direction of charters. Your wonderful town attorney might be interested in that. I will tell you that my hometown of Lorraine, Ohio, has over 300 cities and towns with charters, okay? I've also given you a Personhood Strategic Action Plan, because I'm a Personhood speaker and a Diplomacy of Life consultant. And finally, you'll also get to enjoy, and I hope you might consider this by Mother's Day, a Personhood Resolution. What a wonderful opportunity. You can do that resolution without all the other stuff, okay? I guess I've got less than 10 seconds. Thank you all. God bless you. God bless you with the immense wisdom you need in your journey of life. Thank you very much for your love and leadership.
Clerk.
Pam Anderson.
Welcome, ma'am.
I'll pull it down a little bit. Can you all hear me okay? Thank you for having me, Mayor and Vice Mayor and the council people. I am, my name's Pam Anderson, and I represent a group of seniors displaced by the closing of the Pendleton Fitness Centers, which was open for 30 years, okay? We have asked, can you hear me? We have asked to meet with you today, because we would like an opportunity to respond to the misinformation provided by Dignity Health regarding the closing of the center and discuss how poorly the situation was handled. Several hundred seniors enrolled at Pendleton Fitness Centers, many with special needs such as walkers such as walkers, canes, and oxygen are affected by this. These seniors have been left with very few options. After the closing of Pendleton Centers, a letter was sent to members that had a list of possible gym options. The person drafting the letter did not do their homework. Few of the gyms named offer Silver Sneakers. If you're not familiar with Silver Sneakers, it's an exercise program specifically for seniors that's paid by their health insurance, so there's no charge to the members. Or, so the gyms, we have a committee, and we went around and we visited these gyms. And there were very few limited classes. We found one gym that had one Silver Sneakers class. They were full, and they assured us they had no intentions of adding any additional classes and asked us to leave. And we found another gym that offers two Silver Sneaker classes. They were more open to adding more classes. If a gym has classes available, they're seldom full, they're always full, and seldom offer Silver Sneakers, and would require the senior to pay an enrollment fee and monthly fees and make a one-year commitment. At Pendleton, the instructors were trained in offering classes and instructions to seniors. Much of the equipment was aimed at seniors. The classes focused on improving strength and balance and lowering the risk of falling. Needs of seniors were disregarded by Dignity Health. The haphazard and callous way the closings were handled does not reflect well on Dignity Health. I would like to recommend a committee be formed to include some city leaders, members of my committee, or seniors to be on it, maybe some of the instructors that were laid off because all of the instructors were laid off on that day. Absolutely no notice, no warning, nothing. The class was on Wednesday, and they closed at noon. I do want to commend the Parks and Recreation because they have shown some interest in adding some additional classes. But keep in mind, these classes will not be Silver Sneakers, so they will not be covered by insurance.
Thank you, ma'am. You left your information with the clerk. Does she have a contact?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe we have Bobby reach out.
Have an email.
Got some options with these folks. Next up?
Leslie Brooks.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. So I am one of those people who was laid off by Dignity Health. I'm Leslie Brooks, an exercise physiologist. And as you could hear, the Pendleton Center was an important part to our community. Unfortunately, it's no longer, and there are a lot of seniors who are interested in continuing their exercise and also looking into options that will help them be able to pay for that. The Parks and Recreation Department was very open to my suggestion of having classes. And they are putting together a program for us that's going to begin in May. So I'm very happy about that. That's something that will be started for the seniors. But unfortunately, there's no Silver Sneakers or insurance options available right now. Hopefully, something in the future can be done that will help to get, have that ability for seniors to get assistance for that program. I'd like to see the program grow. I know it's something that you guys are all interested in doing and continuing, and it's been a great benefit to the people that I've worked with. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk?
Last, I have Ellen Baker.
Welcome, ma'am.
I'm Ellen Baker. I was one of the people who was going to the classes that Leslie was teaching. So I'd like to put my two cents into this discussion on how the closure of Pendleton Center was handled. I've been going to Silver Sneakers classes since before COVID. I was going to classes at a gym that actually had to close when COVID came about because they could not survive without paying participants. I started up at Pendleton again while everyone was still wearing masks in the class, and some of the classes had Zoom participants. The room where the Silver Sneakers classes were held had windows where you could look into the gym. While we were doing our strength and cardio classes, I could see people working out with the equipment. A lot of them were regulars, and some of them were very frail with walkers and canes. They had my admiration for their dedication to their health and fitness. We all felt comfortable at Pendleton. We were all seniors, and we knew there were no judgment or pity of our predicaments, and that someone was always watching to make sure that we were doing okay. And I don't know if any of you are 65 or older yet, but when you go for your Medicare Wellness visit every year, one of the questions they ask you is, "Have you had any falls this past year?" I always felt very good. The last fall I had was in 2017 at Lynx Lake, and I hit my head and had to go to the emergency room. But anyways, since I've been taking the classes, I have not had any falls. At the end of March, we were told that due to classes getting larger, there was going to be additional classes starting April the 1st. So you can imagine my surprise when I heard from friends that Dignity had laid their staff off and closed and locked their doors the last day of March without any warning. I can only hope that Dignity's decision was done with much thought and a sense of guilt on their part. Their decision impacted the most vulnerable population here in the Prescott area. Yes, I know they gave us a list of gyms that are available in the area, but I'm sure it was a Google search and not a real search of what would actually be available to our population. I am assuming that the committee who made the final decision did so after coming to the conclusion that there could be money saved, and the hospital staff could still use the gym equipment, therefore, a win-win on their part. But, in my opinion, a real loss for our senior population. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk, anyone else?
No one else, Mayor.
Thank you. Ladies, I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight. Moving on, Council Communications. Start down here. Councilwoman Greer?
Oh, well, we went to the Police Recognition Awards. That was just a really inspiring event. Our police force is really something to admire, and I'm really proud of them.
Councilwoman Dickinson?
I have a few things to talk about, but first, I want to remember Casey Van Buren and her family in the loss of her father. We have coming up on Saturday, May 6th, Prescott Valley Spring Cleanup. It's free dump day for the town of Prescott Valley and surrounding unincorporated areas of Yavapai County. So put it on your calendar if you're going to need or would like to participate. Also this evening, I'd like to recognize the AAEC Prescott Valley FFA, FFA Chapter. This school won championships at the State Association events, and they won one state championship and three reserve champion teams at the annual Arizona State Future Farmers of America Association Career Development Events that were held February 24th to the 25th. And over 60 FAA chapters and 1,746 students attended the event at U of A in Tucson. So we want to congratulate our students that were honored and that did so well at this event. We just want to thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Welcome, everybody. I have a couple recognitions I'd like to make. We are adding some volunteers to our team. First of all, we have William Kunisch, who is actually re-upping to the Board of Adjustments Commission. William has been on for a, since 2020, and he's starting his second consecutive term on the Board of Adjustments. And we have Walter Sproul, who's in the audience. Walter, stand up, please. Yay, welcome. So Walter is here, fairly new to the town, and he's already volunteering with the Building Board of Appeals, so he has some experience with construction, and we're real happy that he was willing to join. So he will be joining their team until September 5th, 2025. And then we also have Dennis Weber, but I don't think Dennis is here. He is joining the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission, and Dennis is taking a term until June 30th, 2024. So we're very excited. Lots of good things happening on our commissions, and we are excited that there are people interested in serving and volunteering. I just want to give a big shout out to our Humboldt Unified School District and to the kids that were here tonight. They're pretty awesome. I was in 2nd grade today at Liberty Elementary subbing, and my littles there today were pretty amazing. They were learning all about government, so I had big fun. Of course, they know the person to my left very well. They all wrote a report about the mayor, and they were learning about the governor and the president. But we talked about how important local government was and how it was the most accessible of all of the forms of government. And so they were really excited about that, and they were most excited about chickens and bunnies. So we had a big discussion about chickens and bunnies. I know. So anyway, big kudos to our school district. They are really important, and our littles are so important to us. I would like to invite everybody to Prescott Valley Praise. It's March 4th at 7:30 a.m. Oh, sorry, May 4th at 7:30 a.m. And it'll be held at Park Collective at 7450 East Pavway. So this is Prescott Valley's version of the National Day of Prayer, which is May 4th. This will be our third annual Prescott Valley Praise. It's, there's no charge. Everybody's welcome, and you can RSVP your attendance at prescottvalleypraise.com. So please do that, and please come. I had the benefit to judge the Mat Force Youth Poster Contest, which was really important, really fun. It was countywide. Again, the littles that get how important not using drugs is, is so important to us because they're going to grow up and be adults and not use drugs, and tell their families and everybody they know about not using drugs. So anyway, that's it for me, and thank you all for being here.
Councilwoman?
This Saturday, there's a lot going on. I'm just going to touch on two things that are happening right here at the Civic Center. Speaking of chickens and bunnies, it's Chicken and Bunny Fest. I know it starts at 9:00. Does it go till like 2:00 or till 4:00? Oh, okay. So definitely, you can come anytime and check out what's going on. And then also, the Prescott Valley Pinwheel Party is happening out on the lawn in front of the Police Department, which is put on by Prevent Child Abuse Arizona because this is Child Abuse Awareness Month. And so there's, going to be lots of great vendors and events going on. And then we'll also be planting a garden of 3,000 blue pinwheels in awareness of preventing child abuse. So definitely, a lot of great, a lot, it's getting into summer. There's going to be stuff going on every weekend, so.
Then one final thing, Badges in Bobbers is Saturday as well. 8:00 to noon, Thane Park. So if you're interested, head on down there. Don't need a license, don't need a fishing pole. So go on down there and have some fun. Moving on to Manager's Report, Mr. Davidson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as all of you have reported, we have a lot of things going on in the community. The only thing I have is our monthly report that is a summation of all of the different departmental activities available starting next week. So we'll be sitting on link there, and it's also available to the public via our website. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Item 8, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council. It will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Council, we've all had a chance to review our packet. If there's an item to be removed, we'll do it now, and if not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the Consent Agenda by electronic vote.
Second.
Clerk, please call vote.
Member Schumacher?
Yes.
The passage unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on, Item 9, 9A, Chickens and Rabbits, Town Code, Chapter 6. Mr. Ruby, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. In regards to chickens and bunnies, this is our follow-up, second reading of the Amendment to Chapter 6, Allowing Chickens and Domestic Rabbits in Town. Staff has nothing further to add. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Anything for Mr. Ruby? Not clerk?
Ordinance Number 2023-999. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Chapter 6, Animals of the Town Code, Keeping of Chickens in Domestic Residential Lots Within the Corporate Limits, Providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not hearing repeal or amend, shall remain in full force and effect, Providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilmember Greer? The passage unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Next up, Item 9D, Town Code Amendment, Roadways, Consideration of Possible Action, Second Reading. Mr. Legler, are you taking this, or?
If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anything for Mr. Legler? Clerk?
Ordinance Number 2023-920. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference that certain document, Amendments to Town Code Chapters 10 and 14, Sidewalk Improvements and Restricted Highway Usage, declared by Resolution Number 2023-2308 to be a public record, amending Chapter 10, Traffic, to permit restrictions on usage of designated highways by trucks and commercial vehicles, and Chapter 14, Subdivisions, to require sidewalk improvements on both sides of residential streets, Providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not hearing repeal or amend it, shall remain in full force and effect, Providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
The passage unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Next up, Item 10, New Business, Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Livestock, Chapter 13. This is a public hearing. I will open it up. Ruby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This is basically back to bunnies and chickens. It's a cleanup amendment to Chapter 13 as a result of the changes to Chapter 6. And in order to conform to those Chapter 6 amendments, it was necessary to have a zoning ordinance amendment that was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission this Monday. They approved and recommended to the council the first reading of ordinance ZOA 23-02, I believe. And in any respect, this is just a cleanup, changing some of the definitions in the livestock section, eliminating chickens and rabbits in the livestock section and moving those over to Chapter 6. Be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, sir. First, because it is a public hearing, is anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this subject? No one? Council, will you have any comments for Mr. Ruby?
I do. So Ernest, this came up at PNZ for a question on Number 111, the definition of livestock, because we left in there poultry, fowl, and birds, but we took out chickens. So I'm just thinking about interpretation-wise, when none of us are here, and... and there's a question about poultry, fowl and birds, which chicken can fall under all of those. So do we need to put except chickens in here? Or do we need to clean up that language any? Is what came up during planning and zoning from our attorney that's on that board?
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I could just address that, we were trying to be fairly straightforward and simple. We can always find out in the future that we may have made a mistake, but we thought that simple was better in this circumstance. So we did recommend that language. I understand there can always be different pieces of opinion about that. But I would suggest going forward with this change and then let's see.
So is there going to be somewhere else in the definitions that says chickens and bunnies are domestic pets? Or something like that?
Madam Vice Mayor, not to my knowledge. I believe that the reference to chickens and rabbits in Chapter 13 were the only reference, but I may be mistaken on that.
So maybe with the amendment, if there's an issue, we can think about that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Ruby?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Reference the waste products from the chickens. Can this be put in waste receptacles or, you know, trash?
I, I believe it can be placed in the waste receptacles, but it is a great fertilizer as well. And some people use it in their home gardens. So it can be collected and utilized that way.
Thank you.
Anything else? Close the public hearing? I don't know if I did that already or not, but. And I got a motion. Councilwoman Dickinson's made a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to read ordinance number 2023-921 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor. Ordinance number 2023-921. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Article 13 dash two definitions in Chapter 13, Zoning, of the Town Code to conform to recent Town Code amendments allowing chickens and domestic rabbits on residential lots within the town. Providing that all other chapters, articles and sections of the Town Code, not hearing repeal or amended, shall remain in full force and effect. Providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect. And providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 10B, Quick Trip Final Development Plan, FDP 23 dash zero zero three. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and members, oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and fellow council members. Before you this evening is an application for approval of a final development plan for a Quick Trip QT gas station with a 24-hour convenience store and a full-service food counter. The project is located on a vacant three-acre parcel in the southeast corner of Navajo Drive and State Route 69, north of East Ridge Drive. And you can see it there in the blinking area. The, I'm sorry, we can go back again, sorry. So just to point out, the land use designation for that area is community commercial. The base zoning district is C2 and it is three. Thank you. Here is an image of the final development plan. You can see on the far right is what is facing the Highway 69. The autocannon, you can see on, on the right side of your screen. And the convenience store is in the, in the middle. On the far left is a canopy for the diesel fueling stations. Here's an overall image of the landscape plan. The development features water-efficient landscaping with drought-tolerant vegetation, high-efficiency irrigation fixtures. It also features pathways extending to the existing multi-use pathways. And it complements the surrounding, the surrounding existing businesses and the expected growth in the area. I also wanted to point out that the applicant has showed that they exceeded the required landscaping. So they did go above and beyond with that. And the buffering as well. So here I just wanted to emphasize again, they want, they did include pedestrian features, outdoor seating covered. There's also in the blue, you can see the existing multi-use path and they have connected to that. That is on the, you can see it was on Navajo Drive on the east side. I'm sorry, on the west side of the parcel. And again, just emphasizing, this is on the, on the corner. Oh, next click, thank you. So here I just wanted to point out the applicant's efforts to incorporate some amenities and urban furniture to accommodate the multi-use path and future connections. The applicants vary and their team has expressed a lot of effort towards having these amenities cater to the, the growth that is expected in the next couple of years. So there you can see that they incorporated the bench, two benches actually, trash cans, the, the bike rack. And they, like I said, the applicant has expressed that they will be also trying to accommodate on a pedestrian-oriented level. Here's another image of the elevations. You can see the highest it goes is up to 20. And I wanted to give this to you to look at as well. The applicant provided a material board to show that they are going to be developing this with high-quality materials.
Council, will you have any questions or comments?
Can you go back to the site plan?
Site plan?
And then in the future, can we have these maps in our packet?
They are, I just, I just colored them in because they weren't in color.
Okay, well, they weren't in our packet.
Oh, okay.
So now are there, is there a drive-through of any sort?
There's no drive-through.
I saw canopies and I didn't know.
The canopies are just for the fueling stations.
There were canopies on the side of the building.
Oh, yes.
Love the landscaping, looks great. Are you representing them? Looks great, welcome to town.
Will you have anything else? Sir, did you do a good job? You want to add anything or we good?
Sure. The question is, how soon were the anticipated groundbreak for this project?
Yes.
Yeah, you probably should.
My voice does carry pretty good.
And hopefully you'll think about joining the chamber because they help with the ribbon cuttings and all that.
Awesome. Yeah, no, I will reach out to our operations team for that sort of thing. I'm, I'm on the front end, the, the development side with Quick Trip and that, but we work heavily with our operations people once they're ready to open up in that. So as soon as we can get construction documents in and get through the permitting process, our plan is to break ground as soon as possible. So if you figure four months for permitting? I'm hoping for a quick permitting, but that's, you know, two months, two months. I like two months. So I mean, I need a month to get the plans fully together. And then once we get through the process, we have a pre-bid process, which is about six to eight weeks and then we're, we're breaking ground. So I mean, if you add those up, two months, three months, plus two more months, so five months from now, maybe this fall, for sure. We're hitting the ground running on this for sure. We're excited to be up here as something new for Quick Trip, so.
Councilwoman Hepplely?
So originally, this is where a chicken restaurant was going to go, right? So did, did, did QT recently buy this land?
We have not purchased yet. We're an escrow for it. We need the approval to be able to, to, to buy and move forward. But I don't, I don't remember. I thought it was a hotel, maybe even on there before. It was a combination of some things. We saw some of the preliminary stuff from the person that is under the escrow. You know, the, we, we have seen some of those things. But we are an escrow to purchase this as soon as we have the approval to, to move forward, so.
Anything else?
One, one more quick question. So there's still a parcel between you and the 69, correct?
No, no, we, we are from East Ridge all the way up to 69.
Okay, great.
At the time, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to rise the mayor to sign resolution number 2309, adopting FPD 23 dash zero zero three by electronic vote.
Have a second?
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Member Dickinson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item up, 10C, Viewpoint Drive Connector, Long Look to Manley. CIP number ST 2201. Sir, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, for the opportunity to present the Viewpoint Drive Connector, Long Look to Manley Project. In my opinion, this is a much-needed project that will bring two new lanes and a 10-foot-wide multi-use path. As I'm sure you guys are all aware, we've had some older pavement in that area. This project will replace that so that our streets staff can focus their attention elsewhere. On April 3rd, town received one bid from Earth Resources Corporation for the amount of $2,591,291. This council action, if approved, would award a contract to Earth Resources as well as approved construction administration services to David and Associates. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Hi, sir.
So it looks like this project came in a little bit less than what we budgeted?
It did, it did. We budgeted a little more than $3 million. So I'm happy that it came under that amount and we have an adequate contingency, you know, should challenges arise. But, you know, we'll be ready for those if, if they present themselves.
So I just want, you know, the residents to know that we did bid the project. It was over budget several months ago. And then we very conservatively waited until the prices went down and we could fit it within our budget. And then we rebid it and now we're coming in under what we budgeted. So kudos to the Public Works Department and to Ron Pine. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Council, no questions, additional questions, I should say. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for construction of the Viewpoint Drive Connector Project, CIP ST 22012, and to sign the related contract with Earth Resources Corporation in the amount of $2,591,291 and approve an amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with Abbott and Associates for construction administration services in the amount of $223,160 by electronic vote.
Have a second?
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 10D, Glassford Dell Steering Committee, Mr. Judy, welcome, sir.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be with you. I'm really going to enjoy that last project. I drive that route to work every day and the, the shocks on my truck will appreciate it as well. Last month, we talked about the status of our Glassford Dell's Regional Park. At that time, we talked about moving forward with three different steps or tracks. One was to purchase the land, which I'm happy to report is still on track for July or August of this next year. The city of Prescott is taking the lead on that application with the Arizona State Land Department. They're already conducting environmental assessments. State Land Department is updating the appraisal that we had completed just over a year ago. And we're excited for that. The second step or track was to conduct a public outreach campaign. And that's really why we're, we're here tonight. We would like to discuss with you forming a steering committee. What this committee would help us do is to design that public outreach campaign that could consist of surveys, neighborhood meetings, open houses, and also to help with the third track, which would be to develop a request for qualifications, seeking partners that would help us design and/or construct any amenities that we might place in this park. The way the committee would be structured, it would, it'd last for one year. It would consist of nine members, seven of whom would be appointed by you by order of seniority, the mayor, vice mayor, and then the rest of you in order of when you were elected or appointed. And again, really to help us design that public participation phase and look at that RFQ. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And Mr. Judy, the other two members that are going to be appointed, how?
Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Director would appoint those final two members. And we're really looking at a, wanting to get a diverse group with varying opinions, representing the neighborhood, environmental interests and recreational interests as well.
Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
So those other two will be by application or appointment, application?
Yes, we will.
Some kind of a press release or something?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, tonight, assuming you approve this resolution, then the form will go active on our website and we will also conduct a social media campaign.
And then are we going to have somebody from Parks, Arts and Recreation Commission on that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's a discussion that we have had. If the Community Services Director elects to choose one of those members of the two that she is selecting, then that's certainly a possibility.
That would be part of the two, not a tenth?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Council, any other questions?
Could you clarify just a little bit? Will, who would these individuals be accountable to? Will the, like, is there going to be a staff member on the committee that, besides the nine people? Or in addition to?
Mayor, councilmember, yes, there will definitely be a staff presence. Myself, the Community Services Director, possibly the Town Manager. It will be a collaborative effort.
And where would the meetings be held?
Mayor, councilmember, we have, that has yet to be determined. We don't know the location or, or the exact time or dates when they'll be meeting. Once these positions have been appointed, then we'll select the appropriate time and place to have those meetings that's most convenient for all the committee members.
And then one other question. Will they manage their own agenda or will one be provided to them?
We will create an agenda for the committee, yes.
You will create one?
Absolutely. And of course, we'll take their input as we develop future agendas as we continue throughout the year.
Okay. Thank you.
And timing on this, Mr. Judy, I'd like to see the, if we're going to do a release tonight or tomorrow, letters of interest within the next?
Next two weeks.
Perfect.
And it's, it's a simple application, just one page, what you're interested in serving on the committee, what your contact information, so it's a very easy form.
Hopefully we can get this kicked off in May. Is that the anticipated goal?
Mayor, yes, sir, that's the goal.
Awesome. We have any other questions? Comments, staff or council? We should at least have our own picks turned into staff, hopefully next week. Let's just put next Friday as a day and we can all turn in. And we'll go directly with you, Mr. Judy? Is that okay?
That would be great. And Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, as, as you each- And Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, as, as you each select your, your candidates, we will let the others know who has been selected, so you can know that there won't be, of course, any duplicates from your recommendations, and you'll know who has been appointed so far.
Could you say that one more time?
Mayor, councilmember, we will let you know who has been selected before you, so that you can make your selection after that time, and you'll know who's been appointed at the committee already.
Anything else for Mr. Judy?
How would you like us to do that? Do you want us to email you, or how do you want us to do?
Mayor, councilmember, whatever your preference is.
How about we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 023-2310, creating a Prescott Valley-Glassford Dell Steering Committee by electronic vote.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Clerk, please, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, everyone, for sticking around. Drive safe.